Okay. The lift station that's there now is over fifty years old. It's the original woman the town was built. And it can barely handle this side of town now, let alone, it can never handle anything else. So, that's something that we have, now, do we have to do it tomorrow? No. We have to do it right now. We have to do it when Landplan comes in. We gotta get ready because their waste has to go somewhere. And it, it's, there's gonna be too much to drop in. You can't put it in the existing system, it can't handle it. When we do that down there, we have to rebuild that brand-new lift station down. We gotta rebuild it. We gotta brand, put a new one in. Cause we gotta put it where the parkwood line can hit it. So, when we do that, what we're gonna try and do is, we're gonna try and make the lift station be a little more sophisticated. And we're gonna try and put a pre-treatment chamber on it. So, the waste will go into its first chamber, we can treat it, and then it'll win the lift station. If we treat it before we then chuck it in the digester, there's the potential, on paper, we can go back to TCQ. And say, our plant is rated for a hundred, but that's without any pre-treatment. So, if we pre-treated up front, then we can put more in it, and by the time it goes through it, it'll be okay on the back end. So, we might be able, we shouldn't, let's say we can re-rate it now to be a hundred and twenty thousand gallons. Existing infrastructure. That's even better. That now means we're only at, you know, thirty percent capacity now. That delays the inevitable expansion until two more guys down the road. Or the school literally has to be in, if it ever comes in. You know what I mean? We can, we can kind of clever, in a clever way, kick the can down the road to rebuild the next sewer plant. Okay? So, that's on our horizon, is, that's a major expenditure. Major expenditure. And, um, we can't afford that right now. Not with our current, we have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserve. There's no way we can do that right now, tomorrow. We have to borrow money. The other thing is, we all know, in the next five years, we have to put another well. We know that's coming. Now, Landplan's probably gonna pay us about a half a million dollars in impact fees, which is nice, but we have to, there's a gap there that we're gonna have to come up with, eventually down the road. So, the prudent thing to do, in my mind, right now, is to adjust our rates now, so we can start acquiring these funds to be able to do it the year after next. Be proactive and start acquiring, now, the well is a couple of years out, but we can see, we're gonna have to gap the well. We're gonna have a gap to put the well in. So, we can't borrow money in the future, but our tradition's always been, try and save as much as we can, put as big a down payment as we can on these things, and then borrow if we have to.
Does the increased fees impact water in the plant today? Who's being affected?
Yeah, that's why we're doing it now. Um, yeah, so the water rates and sewer rates, so, for instance, in the, in the real fine print at the bottom, underneath the, uh, underneath the sewer, and I'm not suggesting, this is just an order of magnitude, right now, we charge forty-one dollars. In order for us to just break even on the sewer, if we wanted to, we have to add fourteen more dollars. We have to raise it to fifty-five, just to break even. I'm not suggesting we're near that, but that's just to give you an idea of the order of magnitude we're talking about here. So, so my suggestion would be to raise, and again, we have, we have not touched, um, I went back and looked, the last time we adjusted the sewer rates was the same time we did the tap fees. I think, no, it's in here. I think it was two thousand and fifteen, is that what I wrote in here? I think I wrote it, right? Did you use it in the memo? Pretty sure I looked it up. August. So, August of two thousand and fourteen is when we last adjusted, oh, that's the tap fees. I'm sorry. I looked up the, uh, I looked up the sewer, damn it.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the sewer.
Oh, here it is. That's the water and tap sewer tap fees.
Tap fees.
Tap fees.
That was the tap fee stuff.
You ran water. Oh, that's, that's water?
This is, I'm sorry, this is tap fees. So, the actual water and sewer rates, we adjusted the water rates, I believe, about three years ago. I think. The sewer rates, we have not touched in probably five or six years. We never changed the sewer rate. We, we, the sewer rate went from forty to forty-one.
I think you did it in two thousand and seven, and we didn't want since then.
We did it once since then. So, we're way, I mean, there, we need it anyway. So, my suggestion would be, we raised the sewer rate from forty-one to forty-five. It's about an eight percent increase, which I think I looked back on it, we haven't changed it in over five years. So, I think when I did it, it was something like, it's a compound annual rate of point eight percent. So, I think that's, I think that's reasonable to go from forty-one to forty-five. So, that will generate an additional thousand dollars a month, right? Cause we have two hundred and forty-five houses, so four dollars is roughly a thousand dollars. So, that's what that would generate. Okay? So, that, that's one suggestion that, that I'm proposing. The, the other suggestion is, um... We've talked about the, uh, water rates. Come on. There we go. Okay, so, if, if you look at our, at our water rates, I'm sorry, yeah, if you look at our water rates here, um, ours are four fifty, five fifty, and then we have, obviously, the, the big penalty rate, if you go over a hundred thousand. Um, this, this is a simulation which uses the data from August of two thousand and nineteen, just to give you an idea of the order of magnitudes. Um, so, uh, we've talked about, you know, we've talked about this previously, Little Elm's base rate is twenty-four dollars for the small meter, thirty-nine for the one-inch, like we have in the shores. Uh, Little Elm's first tier one, up to twenty thousand is six fifty, and then it's seven dollars for their twenty to fifty tier. Lake City's is ninety dollars for their base rate, and it's, you know, and it's not, there's no reason to put it on the, on the scale. Now, again, our rates are what we need to charge for us, it's just a sanity check to see what other people are doing. So, you know, we're not at nine cents, everybody else is eight dollars, and vice versa. So, um, you know, the water possibilities, we leave the base rate the same, because we're gonna add four dollars with the sewer, and we could take these, um, take these rates and, and round them up to dollars. So, if you made this one a five, made this one a six, um, we would make approximately eleven thousand dollars for the year. So, and this is based on August, which is one of our highest, like, or water issues. Right, so, so what, what the simulation does, it uses August, and then it uses, so, this is the grant, that's not for August, that's the grant for the twelve months.
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
Right. Right. So, basically, I take August, and then I, I know the winter, winter, almost everybody's in the first tier. It's very little incremental for the winter. Um, but, we can put in any numbers you want, if you wanna see, uh, but, you know, over here, it tells you in August, this is what tier everybody's in. So, about seventy percent of the town is still in the first tier. And then we have, obviously, the heavy users, you know? I think last month, we had five people with over a thousand dollar bill, but that's, that's our choice. So, I'm hoping, if you want me to plug in some other numbers, those are just round numbers. Uh, you want me to plug in something else? Do you wanna see something else? Um, do I change the, well, the base won't change, um... Anything?
Fifty dollars a year for those that are senior citizens, that might be a little tight. Just the base, going for twenty, twenty-five.
Well, no, twenty-five is what we're at now.
Oh, twenty, oh, you didn't mention, oh, twenty-five.
No, I didn't mention, I left the base to set, because I figured we're going up four dollars on the sewer, let's leave the base to set.
Yeah, that's, okay, that makes, like, that's...
I know you're sensitive to the base.
Well, yeah, because I, you know, I'm thinking about those who are maybe unemployed, still want to stay in town, senior citizens on fixed income.
And I, I think, I think honestly, we've been pretty good about, I mean, not raising any rates, Little Elm, do you look at their ordinance? When Little Elm does their water and sewer rates, they're passing five-year ordinance, it's got five columns. It says, on October first, two thousand and sixteen is this, seventeen is that, eighteen is this, they have five years of annual increases every single year.
I think I'm okay with that, because, I mean, we're, we're increasing the base rate to, um, and so we're not increasing to base rate, and after that, it's a choice.
Where do you do that tier one rate where it was, about that, tier two and tier three more?
Well, tier three's not gonna generate much, because there's almost nobody in tier three now.
I just wanna see what the amount is.
Okay, so this is four fifty.
You know that, four fifty.
Okay, and then you say this should be from five fifty to six fifty?
Uh, put it in, like, seven.
Okay, you wanna see seven? About the same. About the same.
What if you bump tier one up to like four seventy-five, four twenty-five?
Well, let's see, let's see what this is, like, let's just see six.
I kinda, I kinda like leaving the base, and then you bump each one, cause I mean, we, for a while, our curve was, I mean, you knew it had that inflection.
Yeah, we had the urge.
I don't, I don't, I think we need to stay away from getting into that, right? I think we wanna make sure our curve stays above...
I can do my more than topic seventy-five, bump it up twenty-five. I guess it's pretty close to that.
This was, I think, this was six, and this was what, five fifty?
No, it's five.
Four fifty and five fifty.
Four fifty and five fifty. Let's see, whatever's...
Maybe if you're showing, you could, you could, uh, with seventy percent of the town, roughly at tier, tier one and up, right?
Well, I mean, this kind of, this basically, so what, twenty-five cents on that tier is about, what, six percent?
That original rate is five fifty.
Right, so this originally was four fifty, right? And this one here was five fifty, right? So, you made... You wanna make changes back to six fifty?
Round it up. It's just a four, it's just a four.
How many?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um... So, this would turn out to be... It's right. One second. That's about five point five percent. That's about thirteen percent. That generates about, about nine thousand.
And the other reason why I ask you, yeah, looking at it that way, because we're, we're looking at raising in other areas, right? It's kind of like a double or triple whammy, where you, you impact less people while still bringing in the same amount.
Well, I mean, I like, I kinda like, well, I think, you know, Clint, Clint just mentioned, but, you know, this is kind of discretionary to some extent. I mean, yeah, you gotta use the first three or four thousand, you have a choice. Nobody says you have to irrigate an entire acre and a half, you know? Basically, you can turn that on and off. So, I kinda like the idea that it's more expensive the higher you get, um, because...
That's the TCQ model, and they want you to follow anyway.
Well, I mean, the, the alternative is we go on water restrictions, try and get them. So, we're kind of using economics to, to make the disincentive, right?
Right, and so you, this helps slow down the biggest group of people too, right? If you vote in this one, right? It's more of an equal distribution, the zero, that's impact.
Right, well, yes.
Percent of people, you impact twenty percent or thirty percent, and it's discretion.
And it might be ten percent after...
After the rates go up.
But twenty-eight percent people that are in tier two and tier three have to go through tier one to get there. So, everybody feels it.
That's true.
And so they have an opportunity to slow it down before they get into those different tiers if they want.
If they want. Right. So, it goes back to the method, then using it from the economics to be able to...
Increasing discretionary.
So, if we don't raise tier one, every one...
We don't raise it.
And then you...
Yeah, we did twice as much in the higher tier than we did in the lower tier, even instead of staying in the lower tier. I like that, I, I think that's a, that's a good conceptual framework, right?
Yeah, but then the next time we go through a rate increase, we probably hold the base rate on sewer.
Yeah, I think...
That'd be our alternative increase, so we kind of get them offset.
I, I think, I think when we get to the developer agreement with Landplan, we're kind of implicitly agreeing that we're gonna hold status for the first three years from now. So, I don't anticipate going through this again.
For another...
For, for at least three years. Um, that's my, that's my plan. So, is, is anybody kind of okay with what you see? You good with this, Serena? Matt? I know you played with this a little bit.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. All right, so, uh, so everybody's good with the, so what I need, so basically, the sewer's going from forty-one to forty-five, and then the, um, the water rates are gonna change to be four seventy-five and six twenty-five. So, what I need, I need a motion to approve changing the fee ordinance to have a water ra, uh, sewer rate of forty-five, and to have the tier, tier one and tier two be four dollars seventy-five cents and six twenty-five. Make that motion, Serena? Cause we have to amend the fee ord, that's how we impose a new fee, we amend the fee ordinance. You okay with that?
I'll make a motion for amendment of the fee ordinance for water rates, uh, first tier from four fifty to four seventy-five, and second tier from five fifty to six twenty-five, and amendment to the sewer rate from forty-one dollars to forty-five.
Thank you. And the tap fees.
And the increase for tap fees.
Uh...
Which were...
Eight hundred, fifteen thousand, you know, three hundred and fifty.
Fifteen fifty. What else? Two thousand and sewer to fifteen fifty.
All right, I have the motion. Dylan has the second, all of us in favor? Thank you? All right, excellent, all right. Uh, look, I don't like, obviously, raising the rates, but we, look, we got a lot of stuff ahead of us, we just have to be prudent. And, um, we, we've worked about as much efficiency as we can out of the system, we're really efficient, um, but, uh, anyway, okay, next up. A discussion of concrete roads. Uh, okay, so, everybody has now seen the email that we got, so the road guys trying to make up some time, have shifted now to, uh, try to do two streets at once, uh, which they, I approved that, so they're, they're off and running, they're working on Woodcrest, Matt's seen them, they laid culvert kind of his house now, um, so they're working on Woodcrest, they're also surveying up, uh, Meadow Lake, and they are, they're proceeding, so everything looks, um...
It looks like they keep it on time because of the delay on stow, or are they trying to make it happen faster?
Well, cause we lost our second supervisor, so now they've hired somebody again, which, uh... We have a new one, in fact, I'm gonna be out of town, but they asked if somebody could be at the next meeting next Monday. To meet the new guy.
Upcoming Monday?
This upcoming Monday.
What time is that?
Uh, three o'clock.
I can be here, you're all right.
Cause I definitely, I'm gonna be out of town, um, so, that's great, uh, if somebody...
We lost another supervisor from that.
Yes. That one wasn't us.
Yeah, so that, they, so according to Philip, what they said was, they have freed up, they got another crew that freed up from another job, so they have more manpower. So, now they can actually...
Might actually shorten the entire project as well.
I think it will, I think it's gonna shorten the project. Now, they still have to do a lot of underground work, that, you, you've already seen the mountain of pipe out there, that should be starting very soon, um, because I've expressed my concerns that you can have all the paving schedule you want, but you're not paving Kerry Lane, so you get four hundred feet of pipe in underground around the lift station, you know, around the water line, pass the manhole, don't hit the new suddenly cable line, and it's got three inlets coming, it's a massive undertaking, I want that done sooner, because you, that's gonna hold you up. So, they're, they're working on that. Um, so, stow is complete, I got the, uh, the last maturity meter readings, I got them from Philip today, so on the stow lane...
When do they open it?
Uh, they're opening on Monday. They could open tomorrow. They, he said, I guarantee you they'll be open on Monday, but we may do them tomorrow. Um, so what, um, what I think, Philip, was, I said, um, we pour cylinders, and they break them to, to line up with the meters, to make sure the meters are accurate. So, one of the cylinders that they do is, they do a thirty-day break. So, after thirty days, it should have hit the forty-five hundred, the design strength. And, um, so I said, we must have the thirty-day back from the original pour, it's been thirty days since the first part of stow. Give me those numbers, cause I don't have them. So, he reached through to him, and he texted me, and he said, Mark, so here are the numbers for the thirty-day break. Um, so there were, these, so the cylinder numbers, the design is forty-five hundred. So, after thirty days, they were forty-nine sixty, fifty-three eighty, fifty-three forty, fifty-two eighty, fifty-four hundred, forty-seven fifty, and the lowest was forty-six eighty.
That's, oh, that's forty-five hundred.
That's forty-five hundred is the design strength. So, after twenty-eight days, we're good. Everything is far exceeding the design strength, so we're in real good shape. So, everything's lining up, everything's working perfectly fine. Um, you know, they're gonna do a lot of grade work, the most common question I'm getting now is people are shocked that they're putting it sod, they thought they were gonna leave the dirt. People thought they were gonna have to fix their own yard, when, you know, they get sod. So, people are like, stacked, that they're gonna get sod, they thought it was dirt.
I don't see them starting.
The sod's not going yet, cause they're gonna, they're just still doing grade work. They're still grading the edges, um, and getting the bargitches the right depth, and they're doing that great work.
They need to start on Woodcrest, right?
Yeah, they have to start on Woodcrest. Um, the other issue that, um, I want to bring up regarding the roads, is you all have, uh, another sheet that's sideways. Uh, is that yours, Serena? Okay. So, this is the latest on the road, uh, from the financing standpoint, so you can see, this again tracks the, what we have in the, in the construction fund account, and the expenses that we have left, we believe, based on the contract. So, as it is right now, we, we've got interest, obviously, at the end of the month, that helps out, it's another three thousand dollars. So, right now, our gap, if the roads ended today, and Kimberly Horn billed us the full amount for their services, and Fugro did the same for all of their services, today, we would have a gap of four hundred and eighteen thousand. Okay? If the, if the road ended today. Now, two things are gonna happen. One is, we're gonna get interest for the next seven or eight more months. So, my guess is, we would cover that eighteen, but let's just round it off and call it four hundred. Okay? Cause we're gonna get interest, as we pay these things down. We still have one big change order, and that's for the dirt. The, the top soil requirement was over a hundred thousand dollars. So, they're working that out, hope to have that in a couple of weeks. So, that could be, cause it has some grade work in, folded into the item, but that could be anywhere from sixty thousand to a hundred and ten thousand, that change order. So, we have a really good...
In our favor.
In our favor. Okay? Now, we are still gonna have some change orders against us, which is a couple of driveways that are, from new houses, which weren't in the plans when we started the planning a year ago, that the houses weren't there. Well, now they're there, but there's no driveway approach, so those are new. But that should be four to five thousand. So, take it four eighteen, and so what I'm saying is, roughly, let's say that the gap next May, next May, at the end of everything, we base a gap of three hundred and twenty-five, that's what I'm gonna ballpark. Okay? If you flip to the next page... Right now, today in our general fund, we have a record, we have five hundred and ninety-two thousand in, in the city fund. That's just the city, that's not, that has nothing to do with utilities. I think we're gonna end right there. We've got revenues coming in still, we're gonna end the year, next month, pretty close to that number, so that's a good number. Next year's surplus is plugged out to be a hundred and ninety-eight. Okay? We still have some grant money that's gonna be next year. In fact, I put the wrong, that number shouldn't be thirty, that number should be, um, twenty. No, that number's thirty, I did that right, okay. Yes, that number's thirty. So, we're gonna, we have another thirty coming in for the money we've already spent this year, there's no thirty coming in. The other twenty is part of the hundred and ninety-eight thousand surplus, that's in next year's budget. Okay? So, that's our cash on the big picture, looking at cash we've got. Now, going out of that then, is we've gotta pay the gap, which is three twenty-five, and we gotta make the bond payment. Right? We gotta make that extra amount on the bond payment. So, you can see, we're good. We can, we're easy, we're gonna fill the gap, we've got money left over, we're in very good shape. Okay? So, I am not worried about the open-ended, you know, the, the construction, the fact that it's open-ended, right? We don't know what the final number will be till we're done, but a lot of things are in our favor. Kimberly Horn is a do not exceed number, the money I've budgeted for them, they can't go over it, they can only come under it. Same with Fugro with the testing, they can't exceed it. So, kind of like, any good news, any news forward should be good news. And even if everything works out, we have a large cushion going into next year. Right? So, we've never been in a better financial position. If things work out better the next, next year, we may end up hanging off the two thousand and fourteen bonds early.
It would be fun.
You know, a, a year from now, if we're having a discussion a year from now, and I'm saying, hey, we've got five hundred thousand dollars sitting in our general fund, why don't we just make two bond payments? There's no reason to sit in our bank account, I mean, it's making one point oh-two percent, our debt payments at one point nine, it's not, it's not gonna change the universe, but as a fundamental rule, dollars, dollars. So, I think there's a good chance we can cut into that four-year overlap and knock at least a year off the back end of that thing. So, so, road stuff, don't worry about the gap, I know it looks like a big number, four hundred thousand, we gotta cover it, okay? So, don't worry about that. Not that you are, I'm not. Okay? Everybody good?
Yep.
I appreciate everybody keeping your eyes on the road, I know you guys have been walking with driving, riding on it, kind of keeping your eyes open, um, I appreciate that, I mean, the more eyes, the better. And, um, everything, I think, I think they're really gonna hit stride, I think moving forward, they're gonna really get, get going, and they'll get it, they'll get it worked out.
Are they planning to simultaneously do Woodcrest and Meadow Lake and Kerry, or no, Woodcrest and Meadow Lake?
Woodcrest and Meadow Lake, on construction, I expect them to start on the Kerry pipe very soon, to do that at the same time. I would do it if I was them. But originally, I explained, you can't work on stow and the Kerry intersect. But now, if stow's a hundred percent done, now we can get out, we can go around. All right.
I would imagine, once they finish tough work on Meadow Lake, we'll probably take that crew, that one crew, probably deliver the Kerry. And then start one, two, three, always the same crew though?
Right.
Different, on different skill sets?
Um, okay. All right, very good, all right, next up, we have consideration of the developer agreement with Sam Hill. Okay, so this is... This is it.
I think we're still working towards, uh...
We don't want it to go over a year, I mean, some of us have been working at this for a decade. The, uh, so earlier this week, I, I had enough, and so, you all have seen, I... Um, the, uh, so earlier this week, I, I had enough, and so, you all have seen, I, uh, basically said enough, enough lawyers, enough stuff. I'm making the decision. There's, there's red lines, green lines, blue lines. There's bubbles, balloons, everywhere. I'm done with the thing, and I'm gonna go, I'm deleting every comment, every balloon, and I am going to look at the, uh, track changes. I'm gonna either accept them or reject them, but I'm gonna make the decision, and then I'm gonna send you the final copy. And you have twenty-four hours to get back to me with any major changes. And I'll incorporate them, and then we're voting on it at the meeting on Thursday, the end. So, that was my late night discussions and phone calls with them. I talked to them on the phone. Um, and we finalized, so it's done. There's, uh, everything in there, you guys have seen, you've all seen this, a lot of this before. Uh, nothing is really different. The only thing, let me kind of explain, um, kind of what this is. So there's, there's a couple of things going on here, so. One of them is, um, and the school board is now party to this, so it's a three-party agreement. So, the triangle, as soon as we approve this, the annexation clock starts on the triangle. So now the annexation begins, and it is coming into the city. So that's this. The second item in there is, by approving this, we're also approving, this is how the triangle is going to be zoned. It's annexed in with this on it, so that is the diagram which we've all seen of the Villas. And the Newtown entrance, and the Land for City Hall. That is now how this triangle is coming in. It's coming in like that, okay? That's the other thing that's happening. The third thing that's happening is, now that the triangle is in, land plan is now requesting to rezone the whole thing as one PD.
And that was master, or whatever we called it.
So then, what the third part of this does is, it says, now that it's annexed in, and the triangle has this on it, we want you to basically take what you've already approved, what we already did, or the area out there, we did that back in April. Take that, plus this, fall it up into now PD two. So we don't have two separate PDs. It's one big PD. Okay, so that's why this thing is so long with the appendices, because we have to take the zoning we already did, and Linda did this, so like the, the original zoning had A and B in it. It had the, the third acre and half acre. Didn't have anything else. Well, the triangle is now type C. So the, the super zoning now has...